Well, it's seven o'clock, folks. So all of us meeting in our stand for the pledge, if you please.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First things are the elected auditors are here. So we gotta hand out. I haven't read the whole thing, but I.
Yeah, so it's basically in the format of a letter. And it's the topics that I will address tonight for the quorum.
Okay.
It's lengthy, I apologize, but they're the things we thought we needed to address tonight.
You wanna go right ahead?
Do I need to stand?
No.
Um, so beginning thing, I'm Mike Standard, newly elected auditor for three years and appointed chairperson of our quorum, which includes Lilian Dolitz and Glenn Roberts. Um, first off, thank you for all your commitment to the town and taking the time and energy to be in the minority of Americans who understand our civic duty in this age of apathy. There are two types of people, in my opinion. There are doers and critics, and it's always good to be a fruitful doer. I'm going to start out by explaining, um, how I ended up in this office. I had not planned on it. I'd thought about it for a few years and never really planned on running. Um, the night I returned home from town meeting this past winter, I realized that our town might lose the ability to ever have an elected office of auditor and that we'd been years without a full quorum in our elected auditors. I had asked clarifying questions at town meeting, the answers to which seemed legitimate, and had taken the time to read the Vermont statute that allows for this process. It all seemed legitimate, but in my frustration to understand what has happened to our great self-governed town, which was once full of true revolutionaries, including three of my own Green Mountain Boy ancestors and their compatriots, who risked their lives for self-government. For some reason, I pulled out this 1894, 1895 town report, and I read through the pages prepared by the chairman of the auditors that year, Mr. E.L. Allen, um, and D.J. Edwards. I felt uneasy. I could throw other adjectives in there, but basically like sick to my stomach about the idea of ditching a two and a half century old self-government. And I was inspired to act quickly and began a strong write-in campaign campaign that night, probably a lot easier than it was for my ancestors to do said things. Um, it has been passed out in my family's oral history that the original planning and setup for the town of Fairhaven was done at the kitchen table of my ancestors Samuel and Jemima Standard on the site of the Little Red and White House on the Morris Farm at the end of our road, Troubledon Lane, um, across from the "Welcome to Fairhaven" sign on 22A. And it included the contributions of Green Mountain Boys such as Matthew Lyon, Ira Allen, and others whose families names are familiar in this town and can be found in the Adams History of Fairhaven. It was with this duty to those who came before us and future generations to come that I joined up with these two others to rejuvenate this office. All three of our elected auditors have the same zeal to the to to see the town of Fairhaven become as transparent as the Carl Druffey store for our window in the next three years and can assure you that it will, under my watch. Our goal is to have a town that operates and makes its every decision knowing that a group of elected citizens will be reviewing what was done by year's end, as intended in all Vermont towns. We, as a quorum, do not wish to grind axes till there's no blade or to use our office findings as fodder for personal outside agenda. Our ambition does not stem from opposition, spite, or the desire to be punitive, but to have a fair and opening functioning, open and functioning town that is free of fear that our very hard-earned tax dollars are being used wisely and unable to be squandered or embezzled, as we have seen in many Vermont towns in past years, recent years. The town of Middletown being a great example of this openness and functionality, where three elected residents receive documents and envelopes upon request on occasion of good faith and often due to their own digging through the and often do their own digging through the stacks to save clerical work for town employees. They also, according to Auditor Reverend Tracy Weatherhog, who is an acquaintance of mine, who I got on the phone with and had a conversation about how they do things in that town, Joe's from there, you stop at Little Town Town Meeting, he said. Um, she also explained, we get a cell phone call, or excuse me, a call each month when the treasurer gets the statement from the bank, according to Weatherhog. Um, we, we've, excuse me, we, this year's elected auditors look forward to building a relationship with this and future select boards and hope that everyone here understands the recent history of auditors in our town, having found nearly a million-dollar surplus just over a decade ago. We promise to try digging up another million for Joe and Bob to put to use in next year's budget, but no promises. If the select board and town manager could kindly include a tab on the town webpage for auditors, warnings, minutes, reports, and letters like this, it would really butter us up to at least find enough to page to perhaps pave Scotch Hill in the next decade. Was that done this summer? Is that all of them? Oh, okay. In the past month, we have reached out to another town's auditor to discuss protocol to for access to documents. I've also been discussing said protocol with Joe this August. I have also received complaints from citizens who are confused regarding access to the town's documents as citizens. The auditors are advising that the select board act to draft a policy regarding access to documents from citizens and auditors. Should all documents requested be only available through the work of auditors physically going through files, or should the clerical work be done by town staff? Simply a question. Should a citizen be able to use the town copier to make copies of documents? Should the chair of a small committee or project in town, i.e. the rec committee, be able to request access to bank statements to check for discrepancies in their budget? We advise the select board to read the state statute regarding auditors and make sure that the policy you develop aligns with this, as we will be in contact with the Secretary of State the morning after it is voted on, to make sure that it is, as our residents deserve a town that follows the law and supports their auditors. We are quite sure that at times, documents must actually be presented to us upon request. And this letter was written three weeks ago, perhaps, approved by at our last meeting, and we've already been in discussion with Jenny Prozer from the Secretary of State's office. She's the Director of Municipal Assistance, and I can talk about that after I read the letter. Um, second, we have two de very detailed complaints regarding financial issues in the past weeks that are that we believe just simply deserve an honest hearing out from the select board and that the decision should not be led be discussion should not be led and interpreted by the town manager himself, but these two citizens who have experienced the confusion and frustration. Although I am not giving their names and contacts at this meeting, I will pass them on to the Chairman, Chairman Richards, as soon as possible. These two residents deserve to be heard, as their complaints seem very legitimate. I also hope that our elected auditors can become a forum for said concerns in the future and that these issues can be handled through elected officials and not town employees. We have also come to a consensus that the town of Fairhaven has some branches, such as the summer recreation program, the dog park, concerts in the park, et cetera, that are incredibly important assets to our community that need to begin providing financial statements and bank account records to the auditors in upcoming years, including this year. We are confident, knowing the character of the people in charge of these programs, that all is in order, but knowing these programs are too important to see lost or depleted from by, excuse me, from financial problems caused by turnover or management in the next decade, it was it should become protocol to submit yearly financial reports to the select board and auditors. Lastly, we believe that our town has been missing an important part of a well-functioning municipality in the last decade. Financial, excuse me, project finance planning and reporting. It seems as though the town, for many years, often jumps into large, incredibly expensive projects, infrastructure projects, and does the planning as we go. The current town manager and recent select board have inherited more than one of these and also began others. The problem we see with this is not the desire to make the town a better place or even feasibility of the projects, but the lack of projection of future funding for them. In recent years and months, there have been some hasty shifting of funds from reserve accounts voted on by the citizens into paying for said projects, some of these projects being started under the catalyst of grant money. We all know, or should, that large sums of money can be recaptured if the project does not progress or if the funds are used in appropriately. Therefore, this free money acts an awful lot like debt, since the project must roll on, no matter what it means for the budget, taxpayers, or town employees. And because of this, we are advising the board to ask the current and future town managers for project finance planning reports for for current large projects and future large projects before applying for the grants. When large sums of money for such things as paving sidewalk and sidewalks is simply transferred into a project that most people in town haven't even heard of, there should at least be acknowledgement of superseding the voters' intent. Afterward, more important, excuse me, afterward, more importantly, it should be avoided prior. The elected auditors truly hope that the next three years, the select board, the town manager, and the citizens can see our role in a positive light and work together as one to create a better functioning Fairhaven, and the tradition of transparency can continue for another 244 years. Let's do this. And if anyone ever wants to borrow this, the grand list was $10,183. So I guess at this point, we're open to questions?
Mike, I do I do have a couple. Um, you said that you've received two very detailed complaints regarding financial issues and that you've opted not to identify the names of the people. That's fine.
I was gonna bring it up at the meeting.
Right, sure. I mean, I understand. Can you just give, just from my own knowledge, just a general idea of of what the complaints are about? When you say, um, financial issues, you know, can you give me like a broad idea of what they're about?
Sure. So one is a committee member who just would like to be able to look over baked statements and know what's in the coffers from fundraising and things like that.
And that's that that is from, okay. And what is the other one?
The other one is someone who did work for the town and feels like it took exceptionally long to be paid, which I know can happen in any municipality, so I'm not making the decision here. I'm just trying to act as a liaison for people so that they have someone to voice their concerns.
That one's been, that one has been addressed, and essentially, uh, from our end of it, it was paid at the end of a 30-day period.
Okay.
And, uh, the problem was that person wanted to be paid as soon as they got the work done, and we don't run that way.
I understand. I just, I just, like I was saying in the letter, I feel like, and we feel like, we've made the decision that we'd like to be the people you go to, and we come to the select board. Because, you know, instead of having a rumor mill, instead of having keyboard warriors and all this kind of thing, what's the way that it's set up?
I, um, as far as the policy, my thoughts are, if you give us a little more specific of what you think needs to be in that part, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Um, and the other thing that I, the the thing that I find would be, um, I don't exactly know how how we go about, um, providing the the, um, financial planning for something we don't know we're gonna do yet. And one of the things, one of the things with grants are, you don't know if you're gonna get them, so how much time do you spend? You know, there's a, there's a kind of a wish list of things we'd like to get done, sidewalks, uh, lights in the park, whatever it happens to be. And I'm not exactly sure how we get to the point where we where we spend time planning on stuff we may or may not get. You know, it's, there's a fine line there someplace, and I don't know how you how you do that, frankly. But that's, that may be, um, you know, that may be just splitting hairs, or maybe a way to say that we're, um, we're, we're, this is what we'd like to do, these are the things that we are, which we do in the budget season, kind of, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's what you're looking for.
Even if it were a proposal of a project, and if you had, you know, ballpark figure of what you're looking for and how you hope to go about the funds, that would help for some people to say, you know, what are we trying to do? This is why people just aren't aware.
Well, a lot of people don't pay attention to what goes on here.
Right.
I think one thing, the way we've been looking at this in our meetings is is not like focused on what's happening right now. So let's say 12 years from now, none of us are here.
I can promise you I won't be here.
Right. Let's say we have a new town manager a decade now, an entirely new select board. The idea is to have a policy in place that they could amend someday if they don't like it, that.
Well, I think that that part.
Calls for having some kind of projection planning for a project as big as the ones that we sometimes get involved with. And Joe has inherited these as a town employee. You've inherited them as select board members, and not doing that to people in the future to have to come up with these plans on the go seems like a really good idea.
Go ahead.
I'd like to add to that, that, uh, first of all, for the record, off to the side, um, public access document, uh, the statute is one VSA section, one VSA section 315 through V20, and that addresses cost of copying, access, et cetera. Um, that's just for the record. But as far as the spending and the policy, um, obviously, I mean, I listen to the meetings on PEG TV. Right now, we're involved in the sidewalk, the town hall, parking ride, and the lighting. And listening to the message, the meetings, there's been some discussion, a lot of discussion as to wants versus needs. And, yeah, we all want, but what do we need? I think part of it should be priority, uh, uh, priority setting. Mr. Greenhouse has spoken before about sidewalk, 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 and we all agree. The sidewalks that we all walk on every day need work, as do the sidewalks downtown. Of those, where's the priority? We're already into this one. Another big question is, can we afford? Now, if I'm not mistaken, um, there was some type of vote or something that was tabled until, what's the likelihood of a grant coming in? Should we expend X amount of money? Well, let's table it, and then we can see. What I've heard throughout the meetings is that a suggestion will be, should we do this, should we do that? I make a motion to, and this is across the board, this isn't pointing the finger at anybody. I make a motion, we, you know, apply for this grant. I, uh, uh, make a motion to move X amount of money from the sidewalk reserve to the parking ride and the lighting, et cetera, et cetera. It's almost like paying Peter to borrow Paul, and then you turn around and say, oh, wait a minute, what about the sidewalk reserve? Be, I think, as part of the policy, what it should be is before, I mean, stop it before it happens, but then if it happens, it happens, okay? But the board should be, this board, next board, 12 years from now, the board should be presented with a complete and total, full understanding of the monies they are expending, the monies they are committing, where they're coming from, and what's going to replace it.
Well, in defense of of some of that, and I don't think that anything that you're saying is actually actually wrong.
No, I'm saying for the future, like, to to plan it out so that you don't, nobody can help COVID.
No, well.
Nobody can help COVID and the price going up, sorry, that's nobody's fault. Nobody's fault.
Well, let me, let me just use one example. The, uh, the site, the, uh, lighting and the parking ride, um, came in $385,000 over what we had planned on. And I think that when we rejected that, it it dropped, um, I don't know, not a lot, but we deemed it an important enough project to to eat the the overage. And that's, that's why we're, we're juggling money from the sidewalks. That those are monies that we have, that we have in a in a fund from the last million dollars. Um, we put, we put money aside to, uh, in a, in a reserve account to be our grant match money. And so, you know, we've used it, and we're running low, and that's, that's part of why that, that's part of where we were able to get. When the, when the price went up, the grant match went up.
How much of the streets and sidewalks reserve fund went towards the lighting? Because I believe there was, we got 100,000.
I'm not sure, to be honest.
Yeah, no, because I know that that night, a good chunk moved, and it came from different funds. But then it becomes, what's going to replace the streets and sidewalks reserve fund?
Whatever, whatever we do, we'll, we'll do in the budget as, as, you know, who knows?
I mean, plus from the voters.
No, it'll be, it'll be what we do in the regular budget. And with, anybody who wants to come to budget meetings here, more than welcome, they're, they're really exciting and, and they're long. Go ahead.
Well, I, there's a lot here. And the last thing I want to do is shoot from the hip and start, trying to justify, not justify, without really understanding what I have here. And so, so, but I, what I hear, so I just want to make sure mine, there's really four areas of concern that you have. And that's, that's round you'd like to see us consider a policy and include some things. I may be summarizing a little bit, but let me.
As far as access to documents? Yeah, that's our number one thing. We have a job to do this year, so.
You're, you're welcome to anything.
Right.
Right.
Don't ever think you're not, it's just that how much time our, uh, our staff can do that, where they, stuff that you guys could do.
And the thing, and the reason I, so, understand the request, there's, there's a, what I think, and I want to make sure I understand it well, I think what you're saying is, we, we, you feel you understand very well what your access to documents is, and there might, would really like to see something, whether it's a policy or these are the steps, whatever you want, however you want to call it, I'm not so sure it's a policy, it could be just when auditors want access to a document, you're gonna do one, two, three, four, whatever. Have, have a process that we can discuss and say, yeah, that works for you, or it doesn't, but now we all know what what's going on, is what I heard. Number two was the, the complaints, let's, let's make sure we're not just assuming what we, what we have, and I, so I, I heard that.
I think the number one point in that concern is that they should be dealt with by the select board.
Right.
It shouldn't be like, you know, a Facebook war between a bunch of people with axes to grind. And it should be like, if they have a complaint, they come to.
Well, that's, well, that's what I was going to say.
It should be elected officials. It should be the auditors and the select board working together to help these people.
Yep, I understood.
Right, well, just that point, I was gonna say, you know, that, yes, I, I agree that they, that we should be responsible to that. At the same time, you know, we have presided over lots of meetings where no one shows up, and it's a matter of, you know, make, I think that, I think that I speak for everyone where, you know, we want people to come here and and register their concerns and complaints. Obviously, we're not, we can't do this by osmosis, and, you know, the people need to be here, and that's, you know, that, that's the, because honestly, I haven't heard, I mean, no one has come and officially presented this to any of us, as far as I know, so.
But again, uh, I am three here was the saying, hey, we got a lot of things, like the dog park, concerts in the park, and the new rec committee, and if we have taxpayer monies going in that direction, having some kind of an accounting of where, so that you can see whether that's in the annual report and everything, that's what I hear you asking for, us to consider.
Right, and it's just in fairness, that, that everything's transparent, right? And it's not just monies, it's not just taxpayer money going out into them, it's now money's coming in. Even the rec program in the summer is charging families now, right? So, I mean, I don't know, because we haven't gotten that far into our search of documents, I don't know what, say, the concerts in the park provides at the end of the year. I don't know what the dog park provides at the end of the year or the rec program, and perhaps it's all in line and it's all there. I'm just forewarning everyone that we are going to want to see it for the next.
You're gonna want to see some more transparency there, is what I get.
Yes. And I, well, I don't know that I would say more, because I don't know what's there. We just came in, right? We're trying to establish the whole idea of the auditors working with the town to keep everything transparent. I am not claiming that any of these programs.
That there is, oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not hearing anyone say, hey, look, I'm pretty sure someone's got their hand, no, I'm not hearing that either.
I was one of the people to help start the concerts in the park, and I have all the faith in the world in it, and like I said, I know it's important. So for, and I've worked in the rec program, my wife ran the rec program, I totally invested in it, but the way that self-government works is, we're fair, we're everyone, it has to be transparent.
And the fourth item that you had was about the project, what I see there is you're saying, you've got some recommendation as to when we do projects, doing it in a certain sequence, is what I'm, I mean, is what you're recommending, I think, here. I'm, and I can't sit here, and right now, I'm gonna, I wanna digest it, and I can't tell you, yes, we already do it in this sequence, or no, we don't, quite frankly, I just want time to.
Everyone here understands that inflation is through the roof, and it changes your budget for everything, from your family to your municipality, the nation, right? We understand that, but you're gonna, I don't think you can tell anyone in this town that we couldn't use a little bit more project, projection, finance, projection, planning in this town.
So if that's what I heard, what your expectation from us is, is to look at these and respond to your four, see, I'm, I'm trying to, I wanna, are you just giving us information, and that's fine, we're done? Are you looking, are you looking for us to get back to you?
All we are truly elected to do in our relationship with the select board is to advise.
Okay.
And normally, that'll happen at the end of the year, but we have some issues that we feel like we can't really get established as a functioning quorum until we all are on the same playing field, and I think some of that takes policy. And, you know, PEG, um, I always forget names. Jenny Prozer, the Director of the Municipal Assistance through the Secretary of State's office, basically, we wrote this letter before we discussed it with her, and she basically wrote that part of the letter. I mean, it's exactly what she said needs to be done. There's not an incredible amount of case law out there about what the town has to do, and she said, you, you let the select board, you know, advise them that it's needed, and you let the select board develop the policy. And so that's all we're here to do, we can't make decisions for you, you're the select.
What I, what I hear, because quite frankly, I've been on the board almost five years now, it's the first time. It's the first time really I've had, I, we've had auditors.
Right.
That are even asked a question, something.
Exactly.
Some of it's new to us too, folks, so just give us, give us a while. I, what I hear you saying is, you're willing to work with us. Let's figure out how we're going to work together and let's move forward.
Right.
And here's some things, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and one of the things I think would be very important is you guys give us specific wants, particularly in the, in the, in the document retrieval end of things. And, and believe me, there will be some pushback and give back on that.
Not necessarily, because we're not incredibly demanding.
Well, you may, you may think that, you may think that, but you may be, who knows? I, I don't know, and I'm not, I'm not saying you are. I'm just saying that it, it may be if you look at the perspective from the, from the employees. So, we need to know what you need and then we need to know what, what will work.
We'll try to discuss that on our next meeting.
I appreciate that. I mean, and I appreciate you guys coming in and nothing you're, you're asking is outrageous. Nothing is, is outrageous at all. We, we just need to make it, we need to be more specific.
And I request for you, and it sounds like it falls into here, how I keep up on what's going on? Cause I can't be at every meeting either. I go read the minutes and the agenda for the planning commissioner or whatever. So if you're meeting regularly and talking about things, I, I, and we, we do put their, their minutes somewhere. I don't know, the reason I'm looking at you is that we, we don't have a webmaster really for, for our, for our website. But if, it sounds like if you're going to be meeting and having minutes and everything, it'd be nice for, that's how I keep up.
We would love to have a tab under town government.
For the auditors.
Like the select board does and.
That you can download your.
That's your agenda, your minutes can, can be, that's how I keep up on.
Should it?
Uh, no, we can get somebody on that. You won't have access to the website.
That's fine.
You just email it to Eileen and we'll, we'll just have Eileen.
Why not? Why not?
It's, he, too many hands in a, in a website gets, I can really, can really, not by accident, not by.
Folks could jump in on the backside and, and tinker with. It would keep things a lot cleaner if we just had one or two access.
Okay, I'm just worried about Eileen's time, you know, if, if, if the chairman of the, of the board, of the chairman of each individual things can't download minutes, I mean, that seems like.
See, our employees are pretty well stretched out already.
Well, I'd say, I, yeah. But let's, let's talk that, let's talk that.
We can, we can work, we can work that deep.
We will have like a steady stream of stuff.
I was just going to say.
Well, you should have.
It's one agenda that gets posted, it's one set of minutes. This is at best a minute to, to, to do it. It's not, this is a time consuming thing.
Maybe it's a while, a letter like this or something linked to.
Yeah, it may be as simple as just putting it in PDF form and, or whatever form you, that, that's a PDF and, submit it, then it's a big, no big deal.
And I'd like to thank, and with, I said I have a couple asks, one with minutes, agendas, so I know what's going on. Also, my other ask is, from time to time, as you see something, whenever, feel free, give Joe or Bob a call, get on the agenda, come back in. We'd, we'd love to, maybe, maybe we chop, we chat a little more regularity, once a quarter. Or you, or, or something, whatever, I'm not trying to tell you what it is, but you're always welcome to come and.
I think that would be a great idea, and I really do, I mean, I.
And even a rep.
Right.
Even a rep, even a rep at, at the budget.
We all need to work together.
One thing I'd like to reference is, not particularly, this is like a formal request, but for background, so that you'll understand what it is we're requesting. Undertitled 24, particularly 24, I don't know if anybody wants to write this down, 24 VSA, 24 VSA, section 1571D, 24 VSA, section 1571D. These are the internal financial control checklist for municipalities. That is a checklist per statute.
Is that the auditors' responsibilities?
No, it says the town treasurer, I'll read the.
Okay, then it's not the.
No, it says the town treasurer shall annually, honor before June 30th, complete and provide to the select board a copy of the document made available by the auditor of accounts. This goes on and on that essentially this, it's the select board who needs to receive these documents. If the select board doesn't receive certain documents, then it's incumbent upon the select board to go get these documents.
I would.
You know, I'm like I said, I'm not making a formal request tonight, I'll get into it. But I'm just saying the title 24, that section is more, and that checklist particularly is what you've seen more or less what we're coming from, where we're coming from. It's documented.
That almost seems like we're, we're covered with our, with our annual audit. But I, I'd like to find, I'd like to.
Audit by.
By the outside auditors today.
No, they don't even come close. They don't even come close.
Well, okay, it, that's something we should find out.
Yeah, no, that was.
It's a statute, so.
Yeah, it's a statute.
Well, sure, but if, if, if we, if we hadn't been making that statute, somebody would have hollered by now. So I, I think that's where we're, we're covered, but that may not be, so we'll find out. And that's all the stuff we need to ash out and more than willing to talk about it.
That is very concerning is that I dug through here, somewhere there's a policy as far as expenditures. And it goes on and on about, you know, up to a certain amount, you can go buy what you want to buy after a certain amount. You have to have approval up to a certain amount, you have to have a bid. Is that actua, this is incumbent on the board. Is that actually, you don't have to answer it, but these are the thoughts that we've like started to think about. Is that policy actually being followed? But then there was a question of, oh, purchase orders are arriving, I'm sorry, invoices are arriving without a purchase order. Where's the, we have to dig into this, what's the amount?
That has happened and we, we've made it very clear, it's not going to happen anymore.
We're going to go back and go through it very, very carefully, not a cursory. We're going to go back and go through the whole thing. I mean, if somebody goes and buys a box of paper clips, no problem. If somebody goes out and spends $20,000 on something, invoice arrives, oh, this is great.
No, that never happened.
No, I'm just saying like as an extreme, as an extreme. But purchase orders need to come before an invoice. That's another thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, these are things that, and the policy is across the board. Even the town manager or anyone has to follow that, bring it to the board. And discretionary spending needs to be watched. Yeah, these, I mean, we're not here, we're not here to discuss it all. But these are some of the highlights that we're going to be getting into.
That's legitimate, those are legitimate.
Yes.
Arguments for, or investigation for you guys, absolutely.
The budget, I mean, I listen, you try and cut the budget, 500 here, 500 here, a thousand here. That's very true. And it's a difficult job. Inflation is hitting everybody, but it's got to be watched. It's got to be watched.
You're welcome to, the next, October through the middle of January, we will be pounding a budget together. You're welcome, you're welcome to be here.
We're here to help. We're just here trying to help as best we can.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And I, I really strongly suggest if you guys have suggestions for a policy, that you get it to us in specifics. So that, you know, we need this, we need that, whatever. And then we'll, we'll make a policy that, that is comfortable for all. Thanks for coming in.
Very good.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Amendments, see you later. Stop by anytime. Amendments to the agenda?
I have one for you. The Lister's got us the errors and omissions document for the board to review and sign tonight. If we could slide that under old business, please.
So make a motion to add under old business, see approval of the Lister's error report?
Is there a second to that? All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's going to be old business, see.
Who, which one of you seconded?
Take your pick.
Rich.
Both of them.
Well, I know it came from that direction.
Okay, anything, any other, any other additions, amendments? Okay. Approval of the minutes of September 5th?
I need the motion that we approve the minutes of September 5th, the 2023 is written.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Additions, deletions, corrections?
Are there page numbers on there?
Yes.
It doesn't show up on my computer for some reason this time.
They're on the bottom right hand.
Yep, they're there.
Oh, they look good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both opposed? Done. Thank you. Five minutes for public comment.
Public.
I actually don't have anything to say tonight, don't say.
Well, it's early, it's early.
The night is young, yes.
It is, the night is young.
So far, I can't say.
All right. Department head report, a department head, so you can get to your granddaughter.
Just wanted to let you guys know that we do have a new intern at the water plant. Blake Sheldr, started last week. It's only one weekend ago, but he seems to like it. He's enthusiastic about it. Probably got him in trouble at a meeting, he went home, told his parents what he did. Oh, you know how to eat, eh? So, he's, so far, been, been very, very good. I'm looking forward to having him be there for a while and learning.
Ashpoke kid or?
College kid.
College, oh, good.
They must have cashed the check from the board. We're finishing up some of the other stuff we had going. The electronics part of things, as far as the conduit wires is just about done. The company will be in, I'm hoping by the end of the year to get everything hooked up and running. Thank God, haven't had any more issues with dirty water and the pipe break. That seems to be all straightened out. As you know, I simplified tests, you know, samples into the state, they were all negative, so. Any issues is just like dirty water or maybe air in the lines. And that's just a matter of us finding out and we go and flush a couple hydrants, trying to get water moving in whatever area that's at.
South tanks pull again?
South tank is pull again, yeah. That's another thing that we had, have had corrected. Previous operators discontinued a service that we would be able to open and close, change times and this and that as far as the airport valve goes. I've decided it was in our best interest, especially after this happened. You know, if we can get on our cell phone or on our computer, you know, at this point, it was Nate calling and says, get that airport valve shut, you know, we're not running down here trying to get to it. We could just do it from up there at our desk or on the phone if I'm at home or whatever, so. We've, or I've reinstituted that. So that'll be much more efficient than trying to hurry up or if I'm at home, you know, having to go up to the plant, get the equipment and then come back down to the airport, you know, there's 25 minutes for a lot of discussion on the grill. So I think that's going to be a much improved system now. Everything else, running pretty good? I mean, as you guys know, you were talking, they're talking about costs and stuff. Can uncle still keep going up? There's nothing we can do about that.
And my understanding is Aldrich and Elliott Thursday are going to come and talk to us a little bit about the water line break or whatever?
Yes, Thursday. Jason Booth will be here and he's going to take, we're going to, we're going to meet here and then we're going to run down and take a look at that pipe or the space, the area where the pipe is.
Where the break was, yeah.
You're going to run pictures or, you're going to run television or?
Run camera down the.
No, no, not at the time, no. He wants to see the site. He looked at some of the, do you want the explanation right now?
No, whenever you're going to get to it. It's water and sewer, he's here, we're talking.
Who's coming?
The engineers, Aldrich and Elliott? The engineers?
I'm here, Bob, but I'm a mushroom woman in the dirt, it's first I've heard of it.
Okay. Thursday, you had a meeting?
Yep. Got that on the calendar now.
Mike, those are numbers, are you losing any water yet anywhere at all or?
Actually, no. I have a feeling that, as we all know, and saw the, the crack in the pipe, that's been leaking for a while. Our water usage consumption has actually gone down six, seven thousand gallons a day.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you, sir.
Off to the break, it's.
Thank you.
I'll talk about the police department very quickly. Again, we're just hitting the highlights. The police had 53 traffic violations issued, 22 written warnings, they had one car crash and 15 sets of fingerprints for employment purposes over the last two weeks. So far, let's see, we've had two arrests over the last couple of weeks and then 71 arrests so far in 2023. Sounds high, doesn't it?
How many pictures?
Two. From, from the manager's desk. We did that, the municipal energy resilience program. We were one of the first groups to get our, get our information in. So that project will start up in October. This is the program where we're going to have somebody come out and do an energy assessment on the building on town hall. Once that's finished, they'll give us some recommendations on how we can improve the energy efficiency of the building. It's going to be things like HVAC, what do we call them here, mini splits? Mini splits for AC and heat pumps, yeah, heat pumps. We do have a, two, we do have a, one, a very good furnace going in in the basement, so that'll save us a ton of money too. Also included in this are some ADA improvements and insulation and weatherization. So more to come on that, but that's firing up here in October.
That, that report, part of that, or at least some of that will be helpful to the planning commissioner when they're writing the, when they're writing the, the energy evaluation of the, the part of, that's part of the town plan. We'll, we'll need that to see that.
Budget process, as we talked about, or as the board had mentioned earlier, budget process has, process has started this year. We're trying something out a little different. We're moving to a Google Doc form as opposed to printing out all of the pages of that budget, handing it out, having somebody write on it, hand it back. And then it's a lot of touching documents and numbers multiple times. So with the Google Docs, it's just, should just be one or two people putting in numbers and then entering into our system. So we're going to see how that goes. The board approved some business development grants to the state, to be submitted to the state. Those grants are in, we'll, we'll wait to hear if we were awarded, and I think that's in October as well. A and E, so A and E, the engineer is coming down on Thursday to look at the site where the water main broke. I did the pictures that we had that night of the, of the main break. I sent them to him so that way he could take a look. I think he called it a long, long, longitudinal. I'm saying that wrong, but.
Longitudinal?
Yes, thank you. Crack along the pipe. He says that's pretty, he says that's a typical kind of crack with this type of soil. He says these heavy clay soils will just destroy those pipes. So he sent over a graph which didn't mean a ton, but his explanation was he's afraid that we've, we've kind of hit that curve where we're going to start seeing more and more failures. So he wants to come down and take a look. Talking to Nate, he's thinking maybe replace a big hunk of that pipe from some of the newer stuff up north all the way down to the, to the bridge. But there's more to come on that too. This is just the initial conversation.
Well, that's what I was wondering, looking at another project.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, I was going to suggest that we get that, get something started on that.
Well, yeah, we, we, we know we're going to see it.
We've got to get out of the curve on that one.
So that's, that's coming. We did receive, talking about that, we did receive the bill for that. And it was $23,104 from Fabian, which, to be honest, I thought that was. which, to be honest, I thought that was cheap. I was expecting twice that much.
They had as many as five people on, on site at any time. They had several pieces of equipment, the big, the big, um, backhoe and then?
Contractor that was there.
Three or, at least three dump trucks, right?
It was three gammas.
Yeah.
There was a lot of smaller trucks. So we've been talking about the restroom trailer down at the playground. We finally did get the parts for that. The, the manufacturer got back with me. They didn't have a toilet, but they told me where I could get one, so we ordered one from Home Depot, in fact. And then we got the faucet shipped out, so that'll be being fixed up and buttoned up. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, in the next couple of weeks it'll be done. For people that were, had noticed, there was brush cut out on Academy Street. This was the brush that was actually growing into the road. We did notify the homeowner, hey, if you don't cut it, we're gonna come by and cut it, and they, they didn't do anything.
Did you actually hear anything from those guys at all?
No.
I don't know where they are.
Oh. Is that what happened?
Yeah, that was us. Looked good, doesn't it?
Wow.
So, so we received a complaint, we sent a letter, we didn't receive a response. I went down and knocked on the door myself, just, just sometimes, you know, people don't get their mail. The AC was on, but nobody answered the door, so at that point it was just like.
AC was on? There's somebody living there?
There was an AC unit running down the second floor, yeah. So we tried to, we tried to reach out, nobody answered, so we had to do something, and that, and that was the, that's what's what happened.
So DPW did it?
Yeah, we went down there and cleared that out. And we talked about budget, and gentlemen, that's all I have for you today.
Questions for the town manager?
How are we doing on the search for replacement for our DPW guy who moved on?
Yep, no applicants.
Has that been, where's that been advertised, Joe?
Uh, we put it in the paper, I posted it online. I'm gonna have to put it out a little further.
I never, I haven't seen it in the paper. I've been watching the papers faithfully, I haven't seen it in any of the papers.
Herald or the, or the?
Herald.
Missed it, I guess. I know it's not in the free press either.
But we're gonna re-advertise, I mean, and I'm gonna reach out a little further. Burlington, they have a good, they have a good reach, maybe somebody a little closer to us might be interested. It's tough, a lot of towns are looking for people just like this, and it's a skill set that just not out there anymore.
Well, Sarah, you're just going for the bigger dollars. Just kind of, robbing, you're robbing people every day. How's our, our building construction plan going there? Is that coming to a close, or we got?
You know, I, they've been working diligently on the sprinkler and the electric guy was in, so they're trying to button all that up. There's still a little bit of, I mean, they gotta finish the boilers up downstairs. It's like this whole project's been, it's been a, it's just been a punching and moving forward with it. I have a call into the gentleman, I have a call into VMS, uh, to get them to put those, there's a few little things that need to be done, like the noticeable things, like the tiles, um, some transition points in the carpet. If you're in the men's room, you see there's a little bit of work that needs to be done there, so.
Well, it's, it's probably time to run a, run a punch list through with him and have him go with you and then, then, then that's, they gotta address that.
The trick is getting them here.
Certainly would be nice, certainly would be nice to tidy up them eyesores, that's for sure.
Yeah, there's some things that just need to be done, and it's, there's no reason that it can't be. So I, I feel like we've been patient enough.
We've been more than patient enough.
Yeah, um, I don't have a lot of levers to pull on this, but what I can, I will.
Well, I mean, speaking either nicely or, or not nicely of the company, that will go a long way. Word of mouth is, if this is Vermont, it doesn't take much. But everybody's in the same boat, uh, everybody, anybody that's got a contractor is lucky to get them show up two days a week, so. Anything else? All right. So, whole business is the sidewalk grant discussion funding.
There wasn't much of a packet, I didn't, I didn't even put things in a folder, I don't think, this time, but, um, you should have a, just a piece of paper with, uh, some program names, some cash, and then some numbers on it. At the last meeting, the board asked, well, what's, what's, what does grant funding look like for something like this moving forward? I reached out to a couple of organizations, I talked to Devin Neary over at Rutland Regional and Lyle over at Cedar just to kind of get an idea of what we can, uh, what can, what we can do. Rutland Regional, I actually talked to their transportation guy, and he said a lot of the federal funding, because, you know, Biden has this big federal package out for infrastructure. He felt that those, those projects, those programs are looking for projects like multi-county, um, multimillion dollar, you know, programs, which we don't have, we have something with maybe 1.1 million, 1.3 million. But after talking with a few folks, uh, and the state, I talked to the state as well, our program managers, the state bike and ped program, they can give us some additional fund, we have to apply for it. But there's additional funding there for about 300,000. Uh, the state, uh, transportation alternatives program, they just raised their, I think it's the TAP program, they just raised their maximum. So I think there might be 700,000 there that's possible. Some of the bigger awards that?
All of these come with, um, matching.
Yeah, this is, yeah, every, almost everything.
Twenty or 25, or?
Twenty. So the, the Northern Borders Program, which is a great program, and, uh, I've never applied to it, but we seem to be an excellent fit for this. They will go up to one and a half million, a one and a half million dollar award, so we might be able to get the whole shebang, the whole shooting match in one go. And then the RACE Grant, this is, this is a federal program, which we kept trying to get the bridge built with RACE. This award, it's a, it's a floor of 1 million dollars, so you have to have a million dollar project to even apply.
We got that.
Yeah, we got that, but there's no match. Being rural, we can request no match program. Talking with Devin, he was thinking, well, 1 million dollars might not be enough. But what we do have is three large projects downtown. We got the lights, the parking ride, and the, um, the sidewalk, and that's 2 million, 2.1 million. So what I'm thinking is, this grant is open now, I think I'm gonna start hammering away on this if the board approves that, and try to scoop up enough cash to bring down what our cost is right now down with the two programs we have running, and then help pay for the, the sidewalk program.
What's their timing when you get this grant request in, that they make a decision?
This would be in the spring, late winter, early spring for this.
So if we were to get this, we wouldn't need to push things out on the sidewalk?
If we get this, then, no, I think all of our ducks are in a row. NEPA is there, Right of Way is there, yeah, everything is pretty much set in place at that point, final design.
This would be a perfect opportunity to, um, to take the, the suggestion of the auditors in, in that, you know, ducks and roll planning. It really would be, I mean, it'd be a nice one to see what, what we can plan ahead. Obviously, the big sticking point is, is, uh, matching funds and, and that kind of thing like that, and what I would like personally is if we're going to, if we're going to incorporate one of these grants into the sidewalk and the lighting and all that, how that works with the other grants, how, where we're at. So I, because I don't have a handle on what that would mean. And it, the other thing that if I was gonna do that, I'd add back lights in the parking, you know? But, but that's, I, I need to know how it all, all folds together, because I, I don't know now. And I wouldn't know from what you're saying tonight, so I'd, for, to know exactly. I mean, I, I don't have any problem with doing the preliminaries to start it, but I, I just need to know when we have to say yes, we'll take it, or yes, we won't, you know?
My, my concern is, we took the lighting in the park and the parking ride and we pushed it out to the spring of next year, the same time that we weren't here. I don't wanna hold anything up waiting on here. We've waited long enough.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
For lighting in the park and parking lot. If it happens to work out, I'm all for.
Yeah, I agree.
But I mean, I'm, I, I would, I would not wanna wait.
So when are they supposed to start the lights in the park soon, correct?
Yeah, I've reached out to Belden twice now, and then the EV charger, the, the, because the company's still putting in EV chargers down in the parking lot.
Yeah.
We both have reached out to Belden and they have not given us the, the timeline yet. So I've been pounding on them, but they've been kind of not responding.
Well, let's, let's get them to respond and let's, I, I, I know it's not you, but, but.
Thanks, Bob.
It's, it's one of those things where, you know, it's the squeaky wheel kind of thing, and, and they're gonna give you an answer sooner or later if you keep hammering on them. And this will be a perfect, another perfect one to have a good setup for a clerk of the works, the whole nine yards. And, um, so, yeah, let's, let's not let them off the hook.
So for this one, we, uh, I, I pushed this one off onto Jim. Jim's gonna, Jim is managing this project. I just have too much going on, so Jim's doing that, and then Rutland Regional is managing the sidewalk.
Yep.
Jim managing the project. Is Jim gonna, could we get Jim to come in and share with us the project plan and, uh, so we can have the conversation and some of my, my expectation? When this project starts, I expect weekly meetings, if not we, no less than bi-weekly.
I think going forward, we need to do that.
I, I, there's, there's, uh, there's, there's.
So things do not fall through the cracks.
Yeah, arm link, project management doesn't work.
Everybody abreast of what's happening, you know?
So that, that's fine, and I'd, I'd like in a, we, we fit him in, we don't need a lot of time, but I'd, I'd like to have Jim come in as our project manager, and I'd like to see the project schedule completely, what's gonna be done, when? That would make me feel.
So what do you need from us from these, from this report?
Well, so the board asked what that, what funding looked like, and this is what, this is what funding could be. If, so if you have a question, I, I, I can answer your question about how things, how the federal, how the federal and state grants fold in together, if you have something specific. I can answer something right now if there's something, and if not, we can.
Well, I, I mean, I, we have, we have a project going right now.
With funding in place?
With funding in place, ready to go. And if we apply for other grants to apply at that, at that project, how does that work? And what does it cost us, you know, the whole nine, you know, that whole idea, I, you know, and I, I don't know. I mean, obviously, the one that doesn't have any matches is, looks good to me.
True.
I mean, um, and so I, I just wanna know what we can, what, what our, what our possibilities are, what? I don't know, I mean, if, if we say, go ahead and do a grant, are we committed to the grant, then we find out we've got?
That we, that it ties into another grant in 2026 and we still don't have parking ride and lights in the park? That's my, that's my concern. If you want to know specifically why I ask the question, is, um, I don't want anything that's gonna cause delay again.
Sure.
And because delay, if we go in and we start re-engineering, we start, we, we start putting grants together, we, we get into the same, the longer it goes out, the more expensive it is, and we sit back and talk about.
I'm confused here, we've already signed for this contract for the lights.
I, that's, that's what I thought, the contract's done.
That's, that's done enough, we're waiting for them people to move in and start work.
So the contract, then building the stop, the, the, building the lights in the park and the parking lot is completely disconnected, though, it doesn't seem like it, right? Completely disconnected from the funding sources. If we had a million dollars donated to us today, we could dump that right on this project and pay for it. And then that would free up the money that you've already committed to it.
So regardless of what happens, that's all I'm looking for, the parking ride and the lights in the park go in next spring.
So right now, those programs are funded completely and they will go in. The way I envision this is, is that now we have an opportunity to, again, spend some time and apply for these grants. Now, the town has committed ARPA funds, sidewalk funds, um, other grant match to the lights in the park.
Yeah.
If you're able to get this award, then we can, then we can scrap, scrape that money back and either put it back in your bank account or use it towards something else, right? So the idea is to use this grant money in place of some of the other match that we've done, we've done. We still have our 20% match, right, if it's a certain program? This, this is no match, so.
Would, with the total amount, I'm trying to visualize the numbers here, would the total amount allow us to scrape back those funds and cover what would be essentially the shortfall in the rising cost of the side, downtown sidewalk project?
That's, that would be the goal for the RACE Grant, is to get enough money to cover all three projects.
Is there any possibility that were we to get those grants, you might be able to put the lighting back in the parking ride?
That's my, that was my question, and?
I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't quite understand the answer then.
Well, I mumble. I mumble.
Oh, okay.
But that's the question, that's one of the questions that he's gotta research out.
Well, I mean, yeah, you add a couple of lights in there for a change order and it's fine.
In our experience, and, and again, I don't wanna sound like a wet blanket, because I'm all for free, no match grant money. My experience of getting raised money doesn't lead me to be very optimistic that I'm gonna get raised money.
Yeah.
We've applied and applied and applied and haven't gotten, haven't gotten, haven't gotten, so I, I'm just saying, great, if it happens, fine. We'll, we, we'll, we'll look at things like sidewalk coming back, the light, putting lighting in there, but if that money doesn't happen.
We still are.
We still are sitting here having to make it, the, the other part of the discussion on sidewalk is, is, what are, is pushed out? Do we, how do we, what's our decision until you have a funding, until you have it funded? Pretty hard to go forward if you don't have funding.
Well, let's finish this, so.
Which is part of the same discussion.
Yeah, it is, to a certain extent, yeah. Yeah, I guess it is, like.
So, so, but to get back to you, sounds like we're saying, go, go try to get the raised, not match, that's a, that's a, and that's what you recommended, and we're saying, yeah, go do it, right?
And, and perhaps, this is just my lack of, of knowledge, but assuming that we don't get that funding, what is going to be the consequence of that? I mean, are, do, do we have any other funding source to that at this time, or, okay, and what would that be?
Uh, so for the, again, so for the parking ride and the park lighting, that project is fully funded. Those two projects will be done. And I've said that for two years, and it's still not done. But we have a contractor now.
You're not, I assume that you're not the one actually going out there and sticking the lights in the dirt.
I'm not. So that project will definitely be done one day for the sidewalk grant, so that project, we've talked about doing it in '24 and '25 and '26. What my recommendation for this project is, because funding is, is iffy, we just put a TBD, to be determined date for construction, because right now the engineering is almost done. We've already dropped 61,000 into.
Okay, but let me ask you this, as we let this thing, I mean, I know that we talked during the last meeting about, you know, would, would it be appropriate to put the kibosh on this if we don't have a funding source? If we keep extending this out TBD, how, um, what will we be obligated to pay as a result of that? I mean, are we going to have to be? Well, I mean, we've already paid, Joe, we've already paid that out, correct?
Yeah, that's.
That money's been spent.
That money's gone.
So the question is, what, what more will we be obligated to over and above the costs of, of, uh, production? If we just let it kind of, you know, extend out for an indeterminate period of time? Um, if we just let it kind of, you know, extend out for an indeterminate period of time?
Just to, so. There's still, there's still a little bit of engineering that needs to be completed, so that's still, that's still a liability for us.
Okay.
Um, just, once the engineering is complete, just kind of waiting, I think the grant is, the grant is good until 2026, 2027. So you still have a, a goodly amount of time to, to find additional funding. Um, if you don't move forward, the state does have the option to say, hey, we want our money back.
Okay.
Because you didn't build it.
How much, how much has the state put into this already?
It would be 80% of 61,000.
Okay.
That's a possibility, they might not, but they.
They've been generous lately, but, um, everybody knows COVID has really hammered towns like us.
Well, they're, they're in the same budget constraints we are, so they probably will ask, I shouldn't be pie in the sky, thinking that they won't, so.
I mean, I, I, I think that we just need to ascertain really what the likelihood is of getting funding, you know, and we just can't, we shouldn't just let this drag out forever. I mean, I mean, if it's, I mean, obviously, there may be some things that we won't know about for, for some time to come. But at the same time, if, if we can't, you know, come up with, you know, at least a potential for funding within a, a certain period of time, we shouldn't keep just dragging this out. I mean, I, I think it'd probably be better for us, because, and also, I mean, as we go on, the costs are obviously going up too. So, I mean, it, I, I would think that maybe there needs to be, there needs to be some sort of deadline that we formulate whereby it's like, okay, if we don't, if we don't, can't tell whether there's going to be funding by X to, X date, then we should, you know, cut our losses and, and get out of it.
Yeah, I just don't think we're there yet.
Right, I, I'm feeling more like 2025, a lot of things are going to be, become apparent.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm, I, and I, it sounds like we're not, there's not a whole lot of additional risk going through 2025.
No, not at all. Um, and this, this program, um, this pro, the, the sidewalk program and the, the construction of the little park there, um, this was the highest ranked program, the highest ranked grant in the state when it was applied for back in 2019.
They want to see it now.
And talking with some of the, some of the organizations in Rutland, it was reassuring, because they said, look, this was a really popular program, it, it hits all of the bullet points for the state. Um, they said they're not just going to let it fail. So it, it was reassuring, but at the same time, they can't guarantee anything, so.
I mean, my only concern, I mean, if, if we need to let it, you know, string out for a while, that's, my only concern is, what are we going to be paying for the privilege of, of letting it string out?
Sure. Well, the obvious thing is, is whatever engineering costs we have, that, that, that the grant is paid for so far, and we're not going to do. But we don't have to make that decision. I mean, I think, I think that, that 20, if it's out to 26, I think that 25 number is, is, pick a, pick a time in 25 that we're saying, you know, that we're yea or nay on it, you know, fish or putt bait kind of time.
Right. I mean, subject, of course, we find out new information before then, obviously.
Yeah, we definitely don't want a salt shit situation where we just keep talking about it, talking about it, talking about it.
Right.
Yeah. So if the board's good with that, I will, um, start the process of applying for some of these, and I'll start with raised.
Yeah. Is everybody okay, consensus?
Agreed.
Have at it. Um, and then the other end of that story is the Hertz, the sidewalk grant discussion about the Hertz Gate seating.
So the, we have our municipal art hanging on the walls. The question the state had was, shouldn't it be, if you're going to have seating, shouldn't you have some kind of hard surface to put your seating on? Um, and so we had some, we had a college student paint up some, uh, some renderings, and there you go. The, the question is, do we want to put cement or something down so that way seats can be there, or do you want to have it be grass?
My, my question is, there was this sketch that was put together that's out for review right now. What does that have in it?
There's, it's just an outline, there's, well, there's gra, originally, the program said grass, but the sketch that's out for review to the state has, it doesn't designate the material.
And the review that they're doing now doesn't, does, isn't dependent upon our answer here, then?
Uh, well, we have to respond back to the state and the program manager. The, the, two months ago.
Okay.
Two months ago, the question was asked, and we've kicked it, we've kicked it for a, a good four or five meetings.
Well, I mean, if, I, I mean, if, if, right now, funding is uncertain. I mean, I don't know how we can make more granular decisions about, you know, what surface it's going to be and anything like that.
Well, the, what I was going to say is that they're looking, they're looking for a harder surface, more urban looking surface. It, to me, let's, let's say we want what they're, they're suggesting. You give me a piece of property and I can figure a way to get grass to it. You know, if it's nothing, you know, except the little curbing and throw some dirt in there and.
My, my frugal self says, which one is like suspect, it's expensive. I'd rather, if, to me, not putting any cement down there and just having grass was the least expensive thing to do. And if I wanted hard.
But it's just the opposite.
Well, I, and I don't know if it is or not. If, if I wanted cement and, and hard stuff, I'd have to pay someone to come in and put cement and hard stuff, but.
Right.
It's, it's which the, which the easiest one to go from one to the other, and what's, what's the cost?
Maybe maintenance.
Grass has to be trimmed, it has to be irrigated, everything else. You put cement down, about the only thing you have to worry about is once, once in a blue moon, you have to come out, go out and have it cleaned, assuming it's, you know.
I'm guessing it's probably a little more expensive to start.
Just to install, right.
It becomes a much easier.
And all you're looking for is, give me, give me a direction to tell them one way or the other.
That's it, and, and I know that there's.
And really, I have no strong, personally, I have no strong feeling either way, so.
I, I recall a conversation where we had, that was maybe a month and a half ago, where we talked about maintaining grass, but allowing for some hard surface that would allow cafe style seating on the edges. That's, I think, best of both worlds, in my opinion.
Yeah, so, and, so the idea, if there's four quadrants, if, if you remember the sketch, and you see the, uh, the image, two of the quadrants would still be, would still have grass. It'd still be that, that buffer from the street.
Yeah.
Into the, into kind of the, the downtown. Um, so it is, it is.
It is grass.
It's half grass. And I get.
Half grass?
It's half grass.
A half of. Well, let's do that.
Yeah, but, so to the discussion, well, it's, it's granular now, we, we don't know if we're going to do it. The engineering has to be finished, right? We have to tell the state, this is what we're doing, otherwise we're just.
It sounds, sounds like what I'm hearing here is, could do the, do the hard piece where the seating is and keep the grass up front, that's what we want. That's what I think I hear everyone saying.
I'm okay with it.
Let's, let's try that, and, and everything depends on what happens in, in a year and a half.
Sure. Do we need to, to do this through motions, or can we just?
I think we can do a consensus, it's, we're, we're not, we're not doing anything, we're not spending any more money than we already have agreed to.
All right.
So I'm, I'm comfortable, I mean, I don't, if you, if you want to make a motion, we can do it.
No, I mean, it's, I, I don't know, I mean, again, I, I just want to, I mean, if, if, if we are committing to something right now, then I think we probably should do it by motion, but if you're com.
No, I'm fine, go ahead.
I mean, no, I mean, if, as, as the chairman, if you're, if you're comfortable with consensus, I, I am too. And again, we, we.
I came from the seventies, everything's cool.
All right, then let's just, let's, let's not, let's not make it more complicated than it needs to be.
You got what you need?
That's all I need.
I don't need to be flipped, but.
So we're going to put cement, cement on half and grass on the other half.
Right, where the tables and everything is cement.
Okay.
Consensus of the board.
Yep. Good.
Okay, and the listers.
Half grass.
Yep, we're half grass.
Half grassed. Half grass project. That's probably, after speaking to the auditor, we probably shouldn't joke or something.
Approval of the lister's error report.
Yes, so there was, uh, the, the computer system, in fact, they went back to see what happened. Uh, there was one parcel of land that was, um, changed from active to inactive, which means that there was no tax bill generated for it. They went back to look and they found that it was just some, something glitchy inside the system. So the listers made the correction, and the difference is $16,600 added to your grand list. That's not ta, that's taxable value, not actual dollars. And there's.
Is this signed by just five?
This, this is signed by all five of you.
Is there a motion? That we will need a motion to accept.
I would, I would think.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the lister's error report changing, do you need the dollar?
Grand list.
Uh, to, for the difference of.
16.
16,600 dollars.
Yes.
That's a difference of, that's not.
In addition to the grand list.
Yep.
And that's taxable value, not.
Not the amount, taxable value, right?
And was that a certain property or?
For the Sharon Parker property, right? That's what it looks like.
Yep, I don't know where Sharon Parker's property is, though.
I, I don't have an address. It's Span 216-070-11135.
There you go.
It's not an address, but it's a span number that'll get you there. Okay, uh, is that motion, that's a mouthful, and if you ask me to repeat it, I probably can't, but, okay.
Is there a second to that mouthful?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Uh, just thinking about assessments, I, I think we know what's going on in Rutland. Wondering if we're anywhere near the threshold of reappraisal.
Uh, they send us, the state sends us the, I forget what those two numbers are, but they assess us every year. We've been kind of sitting flat for the last, since I've been here, sitting flat for a couple of years, and I don't want to say no and jinx us, but it's been chugging along.
Yeah, we've been, we've been sitting in that, where they give you the min and max range. We've been up there sitting pretty, pretty, pretty good, right about in the middle. Surrounding towns, not so much, there's, there's quite a few that are falling outside that.
Not so far, no.
The coefficient has to be below 80, from 80 and below. And then what's the other term?
It's a.
That one has to be 20%, and the last time anybody gave us a number. The common level appraisal was, uh, around, we were at 17, 16 or 17% of what they felt was our, our, uh, so we're, it's, we're there, but we're not anywhere as near.
So what causes that to get so far off?
Well, I'll tell you what happened originally with the town. We reappraised right before, let me see if I can get this right here. We reappraised right before there was a, a real estate bust. And so we were at 109% of the state average for an incredible amount of time. We haven't come off that bubble yet. We've gone down, we're probably in the nineties now, just guessing, it's really off the cuff numbers. And, and, um, the listers could tell us, could tell you, we can ask the listers to give us a report on that, but we're not there yet. And we're, we're, you know, sometime, we've got money, we've got money in, in the reserve accounts to do a appraisal. The last time we did a appraisal, the listers did the homes and we hired out the commercial. Um, who knows what will happen this time, and, but we're not there yet.
Yeah.
It, but, but it, it, it might be worthwhile to ask the listers what they think an appraisal will cost and see where, where we are, and should we be putting our money in the reserve account?
245,000 for appraisal.
Which is probably not nearly enough.
But it depends too, Mount Pilgrim had, uh, they weren't able to pursue their, their bill that wanted reappraisal to be done every six years regardless, and not using a formula. I'm pretty sure they're going to pick that back up again in, in January, so it may be a moot point. As of right now, though, when the, uh, last one came out, uh, we, we were, we're fine. And we, we shouldn't be triggering any.
We're not, we're not there. It, it's just a matter of time to get to there, and it has a lot to do with real estate rates going up and down and around, and, uh, we, we just hit one the last time we were around, and that, we were way above. But who knows? Budget discussion. Oh, boy.
Yeah, it's that time of year. Uh, so a, a couple of questions today to the board. I'm looking for some guidance on what, what the select board would like to see in their budget. I know we've talked, we've talked a little bit about, um, rec directors and additional staff for town hall. So we've talked about, um, percent increases over the years, so, so I guess that's where I'm sitting today. Uh, my first question is, what kind of percent increase would the board like to see?
A percent increase of?
The entire budget.
010030.
Okay.
Combine, combined total increase. And then is the board interested in seeing that recreation director put, uh, into the budget?
Yes. I'll start us off, I don't know if I'd necessarily be willing to say, hey, I want to see an increase of X percentage, right? Uh, what I'd like to see is, hey, are we going to, A, cover costs and account for inflation? And B, are we going to, uh, look to budget in the items that we really can't push off? And wherever that leads us to a percentage, I, I'd be hard pressed to argue against that. So I, I don't want to throw out a percentage increase to you. Um, I, I think we have to, we have to look at, uh, really where we land.
Exactly.
With, with the, the line items.
One of the things I said to Joe, I, that I said to him, I, this week was, give us a budget, obviously, the first go around, but give us the budget that you would need if you had everything you wanted. I, I really think we need to, and with justification, I mean, you know, you're not getting, you're not getting a company car, and you're not getting.
That was the first thing I was putting in?
Yeah, and, and the police aren't going to have a tank, so, but I mean.
Well, the federal government is giving those away.
Yeah.
So if they want to give us a tank for free and just park it on the lawn, I'm not going to complain.
Might be a homeless shelter, but, but yeah. So, I mean, seriously, uh, everything you feel you need, and, and then, I mean, we've done it in the past, and I know Glenn is, is a proponent of saying.
I'll get my two cents when you guys are done, because I disagree with all of you.
Uh, well, you, you do, and, and I just can't, I, we did that last year, and it's, I don't think.
And the budget passed, uh, but.
Big deal.
I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here saying, just so you all know, I looked at how we negotiated different things and look at the cost of living and everything. It's not just a pie in the sky. But if we come in with a budget increase that's over 4%, you won't get my support for it. Because I don't believe as a taxpayer in this town I can afford that.
Okay.
No, wait a minute, let me finish.
Okay, sure.
Uh, the, the other question that he had about the position, that you said yes, there's a lot of ways, before I start putting full-time positions, because wages and benefits for full-time heads, that's when things really start going up, percentage increase. Before I commit to that, I'd rather see it as a ballot item to say, I don't just have a small number of people who think a recreation director is a gotta have, when we don't have a recreation building or, or, or any other, I haven't seen the other plan in place. It looks like, it feels to me more like putting the, the cart before the horse. But I'm willing to discuss it, but I'm, but I'm saying, when we look at that, I'd rather we also, we talk about the town needing, needing more help staffing for DPW. When you have a recreation director, we could use another DPW head, we could use more help in the town. Well, folks, you just can't go running out and, and say, this is my baby, this is the one I want to put in. I think if we were, we're going to have more staffing heads, let's put it together, let's put a price tag on it. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying that's not a decision I want to make as a select board, elected select board person. That's something I feel I owe the taxpayers of Fair Haven to put on the ballot to say, here's what we, here's what we'd like to do. Do you support it? And, and it's going to cost X amount of dollars. Get their approval to spend that dollars and put them in. And if that proves out that we get what we thought, then it becomes part of our regular budget.
Well, let me ask you a question, that, that's a, that's a dodge.
Call it whatever you want, I'm just, I'm just telling you that I won't. Call it whatever you want. I'm just, I'm just telling you that I won't, I won't support.
We sat here, we sat here and for all intents and purposes, we promised that we would, we would pursue that.
We, we promised we would consider it, not that we would go out and hire a recreation director. I'm not, I'm not, I wanna see the numbers.
First of all, I have to concur with you, Bob. I think it is a dodge because I think it's our responsibility to come up with a budget. It's not, we, we're not just have to kick the tough decisions off the voters.
What, what I was gonna say on that, just so I'm not, not totally dissing you, is that, um. Are you gonna support a budget that, that a rec director is probably gonna kick well over four, uh, four percent increase?
No, I won't. As a taxpayer, I'm not willing to pay that.
So you won't support, you won't support the, the budget item on a, on a, uh, on a, um, rec director?
I'm saying, I'm willing to see, nobody has showed me the dollars and cents. And the plan of how it's gonna be used and what they're gonna do. And, and again, I'm not ready to just go out and spend money without getting, having that in place first. If you show me that, I'm saying, okay, I've got the dollars, but I still come back and say, it's a pretty big jump. Folks, if, as, as, as a voting taxpayer in this time, you jumped my taxes up and, and, uh, and, and you're in that eight, ten percent increase, I'm gonna vote no every time.
The problem, the problem.
Just so you understand.
With that is, that's how we get into all deferred maintenance, bad, bad, bad paving. All of that stuff. Because we're, we're working more towards, uh, last year it was three percent.
I have a problem when you tell Joe, go talk to your department heads and bring your pie in the sky. I want the world in here. No, I want you to go to your department heads and say, I want you to give me the budget you need to operate on. Understanding, I don't have a money tree out back that I can go pick stuff off. I got a lot of people in this town that are low income, no income and fixed income.
Right. Well, what you're saying is, well, Joe, go to all the department heads and find out how much they need. Oh, but if it's more than four percent, certain people aren't gonna support it. I mean, come on.
I'm, no, but here's what our job is. When you come back, he asked about the overall, putting your two, the two large groups together and it comes up to four percent. I don't care if one department is two point three and one is whatever, as long as, and so one might be five, six percent based on what we have to do. But at the end of the day. I, again, and I won't, I won't belabor the point because I'm, I'm, I know I'm not speaking to the choir here. Our budget last year, I don't think it passed by more than fourteen votes. That's how close we came to coming back here and deciding how many people weren't gonna have jobs in order for us to get a budget passed, so we can run the town.
Isn't it true that the budget barely passes every vote?
Yes.
So how can we, how can we make inference that it only passed because people didn't like what was in it, rather than.
And I, you know.
Barely pass every year?
I believe if we do, if we do a high percentage increase, because everyone else, what do they have to base on when I'm going in to vote? I'm going in and saying, okay, what's my cost of living increase that I got this year from, from social security? I think it's right around two point something percent. Got town coming in saying, let's raise our budget and let's put our budget, I, I'm sure, we really need it, gotta have it, we're doing a wonderful job for you. It's eight, nine percent.
Here's the percent, a thing that I'm getting, and this is based upon my very minimal experience with this. I think that part of the problem is that we as the select board are not explaining to the citizens of this town why we need this money. You know, obviously if we just present them some numbers that say, and, and the number at the end of the list is, okay, this is a six percent increase. Sure, I can see some people saying, well, that's, you know, but I'm also getting the impression that the people who are, are objecting to any significant increase. It's a loud, small and loud minority. I think that the fact is that, that from what we're hearing and certainly with the rec director. We're hearing a lot of people saying we need these things. And, you know, I don't think that anybody's being, demanding that we just spend anything we want for it. And certainly we have an obligation to be prudent. But at the same time, we also have an obligation to do what the town needs. And it seems that you're, you're talking at cross purposes while, well, we need this, we need to do this, but it can't be more than four percent. I mean, they're, they're.
I'm just saying, we've got a town here that sat for four years without a rec, without an active, living, breathing recreation committee. All of a sudden, we, we've got a recreation committee and we're gonna go hire a full-time recreation director. Pardon me if I'm just saying, wait just a minute. If you really cared that much, where the heck were you the last four years?
But Bob, but who cares? Who cares what's happened in the past?
But wait a minute. So I'm saying, okay, I, and don't get me wrong, I think it's great that we have a rec committee that wants to do things. Matter of fact, I, I think when we're talking fixing the ball fields and everything. Yeah, if we had an active rec committee before, we're, we're here there, so that's good. And I look, we have money in our recreation fund, we could've easily done two fields. We, we got money enough in our account to do two fields this, this past summer. But we didn't, because we didn't have anyone there. Before I'm ready to say I wanna spend the money, which is probably about sixty-five thousand plus benefits for a rec, full-time recreation director.
Actually, it's probably cheaper.
Fifty thousand dollars with benefits, sixty-five thousand dollars?
But that's not full-time rec director. What we've been talking this whole time is part-time rec director, part-time, probably economic development coordinator. Using that person in a multifaceted way that also helps in town hall in completing some things that we say we need some help on.
Let's not get, let's not get real specific today.
No, I bet, but I'm, again, you were just.
We can live with, we can live with your four percent.
Yeah. I just wanna say one thing for a couple of seconds. I won't take up a lot of time. But those folks that, uh, the rec department supposedly come in here, they talk to a lot of good ideas, okay? And I agree, we do need something. They also talked about a good rector, director could find financing for himself or herself through grants. Through, through fundraising.
Sponsorships.
Through sponsorships, all that stuff. So I, I don't think it's gonna be a lot of money in the long run. To have one of these persons. And I really totally agree with the fact that having a multitasking person to help do things. You know, help write grants, help economic development, help rect, you know, something like that, if we can get that right person. And as far as the budget goes. I think it's very important to do certain things so that the people see us doing it. Like do a section of sidewalk on Grave Street, Carnarvon Street, where, whatever street you want. Do, do a couple three hundred feet here and fifty-seven feet down here and so on. We got some money to do these projects. Let's try to get that. And ditching on the highways. You have people out in the country, it's not just all about the town right here in this city. It's Scotch Hill. It, people aren't gonna be able to drive that road this winter. We don't have enough people on the DPW to safely ditch that road to do, if they wanted to go up there and do it. We need bodies in these jobs. And I think if it's, people know that, I think they'll support us.
Twenty-six miles of road, I can tell you, I know it. And you'd, you'd have a hard time getting my support for it. Twenty-six miles of road.
Well, maybe, maybe we should consider going to a contract on, on road maintenance. In certain areas like the Scotch Hill is so bad. Hire a contractor, go up there and get the job done. And bond it or something. But I'm telling you is.
But we're getting, we're getting. We're getting the specifics.
You, you wanted some general guidelines. I think you're getting a sense of what people are thinking. Most, most are saying, go get, go get the world. I know it's gonna be an interesting budget cycle, uh, when, when you're coming for the world.
That's, I mean, that, that, that's a cheap shot. I mean, it's not, we're saying give the world. We're not, we're, we're trying, we're trying to kind of balance, balance our responsibility to be prudent. Versus what the town needs. And, and that, we're not, we're not asking for the world here. But I mean, I'll give you an exa- I mean, I, I'm, I'm a firm believer that we are obligated to undertake the projects and the, and expend monies. For things that benefit the largest amount of people in town. I had no idea until Chad told me that, what, like seven hundred kids are in the rec program? And when you include the seven hundred kids, you have to include the parents and the rest of the families who participate, you know, on the side. So you're talking, when you add all those numbers up, that's a vast majority of the people in this town. And so, you know, when you talk about, well, we need to, we need to keep, you know, you know.
I, I don't, I don't think you understand what I'm saying. I'm all for recreation, the programs that we have. And I don't think your miracle cure of a rector, full-time rec director is going to solve. The major problems with, with, with the thing. Maybe not. I hope I'm wrong. I, I hope I'm, I'm wrong in that, in that area. But again, I still look back and I'm going, okay, folks, great. I'm glad we've got some energy and some people that wanna do something. Now show me that you're doing something, cause I sure haven't seen it. That's all. And, and before I'm ready to start putting a lot of dollars down, I'd like to see some.
I don't think it's unreasonable, it's unreasonable for you, you. To put a bare bones and what you think we need budget. So there's actually two numbers. You know what I'm saying?
Uh, I do.
That sounds like the à la carte.
That's, yeah, that's pretty much what we do.
What, what he does. See, I, and then I, and I don't know what you're arguing for because he puts one that says, this right here is bare bones. You, the, the board, he calls it à la carte that he does. Here are all the things that's got everything his department head says they want. As a board, we can sit here, I'm only one vote. You can go and add everything, everything you want, everything you want on that thing. Part of that will be a recreation director and that is not gonna be, cause I don't know how you can sit here. And say, this is what it's gonna cost me. The first year for that rec director, for him to set up and figure out how they're gonna pay for themselves and bring some in.
You're right.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to come out. I want, when I'm throwing.
Every single.
When, when I'm throwing out the thing that you ask folks what they want, in, as far as the taxpayer, do you want a full-time rector? Is that, is that sitting, is on your must, must-do list? Because what you do, the taxpayers are giving us license, as far as I'm concerned. To make sure that money's in the budget and that we have, if they don't pay for themselves. It's gotta go in the budget.
That's, that's what I'm saying. We. It's gonna take a lot of legwork for somebody. I'm, I'm not that person.
I think that the, Jason's point of not explaining is what we do regularly. And what, the other thing that we do, which I, I hate, is we have. Have told the townspeople that we've level funded. When in fact, we haven't included inflation in that level funding, so we've actually cut the budget. Year after year after year after year, including last year, when, when, when the, when it was six or seven percent. And we came in at three and a half, was it? Three and a half was at the final number?
Came out, no, when it got all done, it came, it came out close to four. Just three point eight nine.
But, but, but with an inflation rate of seven or eight percent, Bob Drake.
This year, this year the inflation rate of four percent?
Right, but that's, that's overall. You have to look at the inflation rate in sectors, so.
Yeah, right.
You know, so it's fuel, fuel, you know, construction costs, things of that sort, which are much higher.
So what would you, so what would you like, when you're, when you're looking, I've heard two different things. Bare bones and the à la carte, what she's saying, or I heard you saying, go.
Or, or even a range.
Send to the world. I know I sat here when the, when the world is there and we sat here.
Then, then how about this? Why don't we ask for a range of what the cost might be? Here's what the bare bones is, we think it might be. Here's what it would be with a little bit more room in it and a little bit more, you know, that, that's fine. You know, I, I think that we have the obligation to look at all sides of this and not just what's the cheapest, you know, thing we can come up with.
And, and the all sides is the à la carte and the, and send me the.
I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with that. Hold on, Roseanne gets next.
One of the main questions was about the rec director. Correct? And we know that we definitely need people in the DPW. I mean, that's a definite, correct?
We've got open positions.
We got open positions.
That's already in the list.
So is it at all possible that instead of going for a full-time rec director? And I know you guys were talking about, well, he could also be doing this in town hall and that in town hall. Well, and yes, we, I, cause I know Eileen is, is strapped. But it doesn't seem to me to be that, that position would be actually helping her out. Why couldn't we have somebody who is, does, part rec director and part DPW? Because as, as a member of the DPW, he would have to be, you know, he would have to have, be an employee, he had the, the benefits and all that. And then just. Kind of wing him out and he have to, part of his job would be to work on directing recreation.
To your point, I think we, we absolutely need more DPW folks. I think over the past four or five months, we've recognized that we have to have someone at least part-time helping in here. And rather than looking for someone who's part-time here and then someone who has both the skills of managing a rec department and. Potentially fixing trucks, you know, we look at skill set in, in rec director and some sort of. Economic development or, or a kind of municipal administration kind of falls a little more in line. I think that's where we, at least I've envisioned it.
It would be a rare bird to find somebody that.
Right.
It's a DPW and that.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Once again, that's, that's the.
Be nice. It's a great idea.
I mean, one of my concerns about, about that whole part-time arrangement is this, is, you know, as Rich brought up. One of the things we would hope for as a rec director would be self-supporting. In other words, go out, get grants. Get, you know, get equipment from companies, get sponsors, all that. And hopefully at the end of the day, it would essentially zero out the cost of having a rec director. I think if you take, you stretch that person out and you put them, you know, half the time in the rec director and half the time in the office. It gives them less time to, 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 you know, to undertake the tasks that would, would, and make them pay for themselves. And that, that's, that's my only thought about that. But, you know, wha- whatever it is, I think that we can think outside the box. And come up with a lot of different things on this, but I think that just basically we need to examine realistically.
And I think, I think Glenn's point, the à la carte and the bare bones gives us, gives us that opportunity. I, I had forgotten that. But that's, that's fine, um.
I just have one more question about the rec, rec department. Is that also going to work with the senior? Are we also gonna be working with the seniors?
If we have a rec.
Should be everybody.
Yes, it should be everybody. It would, it would have to be everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, because, yes, absolutely.
We have a lot of kids, but we also have a lot of older folks in town too.
I, I'd like to think special events, like we, we finally do a winner carnival or we could do, there are multiple things. I, I, the position, I, I don't dispute is value added and, and all that. I'm just trying to think how we.
I'd like to do it and not reach taxes.
Good luck with that. We're not, very good luck with that. I don't think that's possible.
Uh, what I'm saying is, infrastructure and public safety is our main goal.
I agree.
Okay? If we don't have proper water lines and upkeep on them babies, we're failing.
Yeah.
We're failing as taxpayers.
That's a different budget, but yes.
Okay. If they can't drive up and down a road without going off the road because of lack of maintenance, that's public safety. So that's very important.
And I think quality of life is absolutely, um. As important.
It, it helps people come with our recreation program. We'll get people to come live here. I, I understand all, all those pieces. I think we'll be talking about the, the budget and we'll be looking at the à la carte. And sometimes you might pick something and say, well, we're, we're gonna put it in and try it there. But like last year, we took and took, uh, thirty-four thousand and let the voters say, and that's how we got some additional monies for painting the park fence, painting the facade and.
And I also felt that we should've included that in our original budget, putting it out to appropriate.
But, but the, but the thing, the thing that I got from that was, the voter said yes. So I, I take that as a license to make sure that we've taken care of that this year. That was thirty-four thousand. That's not. That's not a couple positions in, in the best of all worlds.
I think that overall, we need a coherent plan of what are our priorities going forward? And what do we think needs to be, what, what do we put aside for the future and deferred maintenance, things like that? What projects do we deal with? And once we come up with a coherent plan, then we present that to the voters and say, here, this is what we've got, this is our plan. And, you know, I think that, that, that will ease a lot of, of the objections. And, you know, it'll make us, at the same time, it also makes us look like we're, we're doing our jobs.
As long as we pass the test, this is okay. You got, we have so much money that you're going to be able to spend. What's the need to have and what's the nice to have? There's some nice to have items that we put off for a long time that I know we, we get frustrated and we don't get there. And every now and then we get some of those, but it's, the balancing act isn't, isn't easy, but we'll, we'll figure it out. I don't, do you have what you are not wanting to beat this dead horse to death?
We've pretty much.
And we're pretty much, we, we found it pretty good. Do you have the, what you need or anything else?
No, that didn't help at all. So, so this is as I imagine it moving forward after hearing the conversation. I have an operating budget and then I have the à la carte, right? The, the wants to have and then the absolutely has to haves. The absolutely has to haves, that percentage is going to, that percentage is going up. If it's 4%, we, I could bring it in wherever you want, is my point being, but we bought two trucks and flip, you know, that is time to pay the piper. We got a brand new $300,000 truck we got to pay for now. Inflation went up, we were over budget last year and both 010 and 030. Revenues covered the cost, but we were still over budget by kind of a lot. So you're going to see a large increase and I need to know why I can cut to make it down to 5% or 4%. I, I just need to, I need some kind of guidance, otherwise I'm just going to.
If I slip it all in, the guys will cut, cut it out anyway. We'll be here for days and days.
I, I'm just sick of trying to make it fake. We're, we're lying to the public if we say we can keep a budget in, in some, some unsubstantiated low increase. I mean, if, if we need 6% or 7% to get there, we have to sell that to the, the public if, if that's where we end up thinking we need.
So inflation was 4% overall this year. How do we feel about a 5% budget and then with the à la cartes? I need some kind of guidance, otherwise I mean, it would just be a.
So you.
What I'm asking is, is a 5% budget and then the à la carte list. 5% gives you 1% over inflation because we have to account for our trucks. Not saying that that's 1% worth of our budget, I'm just saying.
Fuel is going to go awful, they say.
I've already had to deal with it. So how about a 5% operating budget and then à la carte, everything else like the rec director and staff and whatever else is out there? Is that, is that a good starting point?
Let's start there and, and work our way.
Yeah.
We're going to worry towards Glenn.
Yeah, I just don't want to push everything in and then maybe you guys strip everything out because it's too much.
But that's a good start then. We'll go back. I, I can remember going through line by line, taking a hundred dollars out, $500 out there. I mean, I, it's to, to get there and I'm just trying to make it.
Well, it's, it's the way we work. Yes, ma'am.
I really think you underestimate the townspeople.
I agree with you.
I am considered, you know, what you, you guys all think of me as the little old lady. The little old lady who lives on a fixed budget, you know? My friends are all just like me. We, I have never been in a conversation with my peers where anybody has said, the taxes are too high, the taxes are horrible. I wish they wouldn't do this, I wish they wouldn't do that.
So you wouldn't mind.
I never have heard that.
You wouldn't?
You have to, you, in order to be, in order to be a little old lady and survive in this world, and I do it very well, thank you, but you have to prioritize. You know, your taxes are more important than that six pack of beer. You're still, I, I'm not saying you, you is general here. You're perfectly willing to pay $10 for your pack of cigarettes. And that has gone up how much since last year?
I don't know.
Nobody's complaining about that. We're talking about a rec director, a recreation program for all the children in Fairhaven. We're talking about three-year-olds that go down there and 15-year-olds or 20-year-olds. That's a lot of people. We have a dog park. How much did you pay for the dog park? How many people are up there?
I can tell you that because we have to, we, we take the dog when there's no one else there and that's, we can do it fairly often.
I walk around town here, I walk two miles every single day. I used to do four, I can't anymore. I agree with Rich. If you fixed at 26 North Main, at 26 Washington Street, there's a 10-foot section of sidewalk that is a mud puddle when it rains. If you fix that, people would see and say, geez, they're really trying to do something. Excuse me, I've gone.
No, no, again, it's all about transparency. As long as we explain what our thoughts are.
I agree with you.
And people know about it, then at least they can, they can make an educated decision.
And, and you're absolutely right. Nobody has ever said, we need to paint the fence. A lot of people say, we need to paint the fence. We need to paint the fence. If anybody asks, why don't you say, if we don't paint it, it's going to be rotten. If we don't paint that fence, you're going to replace it.
I mean, but that, that is our job.
If you don't cut the hedge, you're going to have trees.
And, and I truly believe that. If we explained it completely and, and transparently to everyone, I really think you wouldn't be hearing many objections.
And also, let me, I'm going to tell you, the little old ladies that I know, I'm 84 years old. The little old ladies that I knew, that I know that are my age and live alone and live on a fixed income and all that, they're not complaining about.
They're not complaining.
About painting the fence or having a recreation department. They go to the playground when their great grandchildren are playing.
I think they're less concerned with the amount than what we're doing, whether we're doing it responsibly.
And what are you doing with it?
Responsibly. That's what they're concerned about. And people aren't stu-, people are not dumb, you know, they.
I will shut up now, I'm sorry.
Let's, let's, let's stop beating this horse.
Okay.
Let's do what you suggested, 5% and the à la carte and, and we will adjust accordingly.
Use some other term other than à la carte. I'm hungry now because of this, okay? All right.
Okay, let's move on with that direction, that concise direction that we gave you.
Yes, that was perfect.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I recommend that on, on the parking lot that we tabled this for the next meeting? I think we've, I, I don't think there's a lot there right now.
There isn't.
Okay.
One, one is a board roundtable. Rich?
I've said in my piece, we got a, we got a ditch, we got a mall, and we got to maintain highways with paving and whatnot. That's, it's nothing new to me. We got to do it somehow, some way.
Can't hear you with it.
Agreed.
Sure.
Nothing bad? I'm good.
I only have one item here and that is.
What? I thought, I thought I was going to get through the whole, go ahead.
No, well, no. Just a thought on, with the park and ride and lighting the park coming in, you know, each winter when we take the snow and we pile it with a park and ride, it's not going to allow it to happen anymore. And we're going to be, if the sidewalk project, we're not going to be able to pile snow there anymore. Just think that we should discuss, and maybe it's time before you have to do it, like this winter, where are we going to put the snow that we usually put in these huge piles, one in front of the building here, usually one, you got a couple down at the other end. And maybe that's a combination of Joe talking with Nate and see what they recommend or whatever. Because I'm sure they, they've got some, how much gas you spend when you move it or whatever. Rather than waiting until we have to do it, why, and.
Come up with some creative ideas. It's, it's a hazard.
And it would, it would also make the, the park and everything, because when it starts melting and freezing in the, in the spring and everything, what, what we're doing there?
So, so Glenn actually called me and asked me about this earlier today. And the plan, once the parking lot was there, was to kind of push it up to, I think everybody calls it where the helicopter lands. Everybody knows what that means.
What?
The helicopter, where the helicopter lands. I don't see clear enough. There's, there's a green space on the other side, like on West Park, near the Rasmussen's house.
Southwest Park by Rasmussen's.
So the town owns that. We were, we were thinking, when Aaron was here, in fact, we were thinking, we, we would push the snow there. Glenn made a good point. He says, you know, as winter moves on, those big piles of snow just look kind of crappy downtown, just piled up. We can truck the stuff out.
We used to, but we used to dump it over the side at the national, at the, the bank, merchants' bank or whatever it is now. Whatever it's called now. Used to go over down the backside of the parking lot and over the ditch, over the.
We won't put it there, but there was, there was a couple of locations that, that were spit-balled. So we can do that, it's just, it's just more labor to do it is all. And it's, it's expedient to put it where it is, but if we want to, we can move it. I mean, it would make.
We don't have a choice.
I think we're going to have to.
Yeah, we don't have a choice now.
More bodies of dust and truck seats that we do not have.
That's, that's the point that I'm getting at. It's like, it's just more labor and more cost.
Well, yeah, but it, but it's, it's also, it's a safety concern and, and it's, you're going to have, you get rid of it at some point anyways. You make that effort to do that. So we, we, since the days of Louis Freener's, we've been piling that snow there. And it's just, everybody's used to it, it's institutional now. It really shouldn't be. You know, keep the plow, keep the, keep the plow on the ground and push it all around. You know, I mean, really, there's got to be a different mindset. And I think this is absolutely a good time to think about that. And experiment with a couple of things. I mean, that's a good idea, that, that, there's a fire hard there, be careful that you don't push that over, but.
I'd heard two other places. One, the, um, down by our transfer station where you, you put the bottles in brown paper bags and there's a little road, there's, there's quite an area behind there that you could pile snow. The.
That's true.
Where the old Fairhaven outlet, not much difference. The, the natural slope is when it melts, it's, where it's melting now, it's going in the river. So it's going to, it's going to go, but down there you already have, we don't do much. We, we don't, we already have.
That's not a bad idea.
We already have, I think, enough. So it's just when it melts, it's not an area that's.
It'd be in the river.
Do we own that land?
That's town land.
I mean, if you leave it, you don't own it all.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, on Prospect, as you go, as you go in.
Just that slope. We don't, we don't own most of what's, what's paved.
Okay.
Except, except straight across from the slope to the river. But that's a, not a bad idea.
No, that was Glenn, that's a pretty good idea.
Well, you, you wouldn't need necessarily a, I'm thinking that the bucket loader that takes it over and dumps it now, the bucket loader.
Takes a couple trips.
Goes down around the corner and dumps it versus, when I thought of over at Rasmussen's, the only thing that bothers me is, does anyone live in the houses and do you want that big mound of snow, even though it's town property in front of your house?
If you want it in front of somebody's business, we've done that for the last 70 years.
Well, I, I.
We should try something different.
Over in that corner where you're talking is a good idea because I do believe that may cause some more erosion.
Right, it might cause some, when, when it, I, I just, it might. We, we have a couple of places that the town owns and, and, but I just, be curious what your, what your team thinks.
It'd be interesting to see the first snowfall, what kind of a, an extra amount of time that took, but that's not, the, the outlet ones really.
And if it doesn't work, we'll try something else. We can try something else out, but, because we're definitely going to have to do something.
Why not the airport?
It's just further away.
It's just further for trucking.
North, we're south side, so south side would be put at, you know, at the outlet. Like from the, the park, south would go to the outlet and then from, and then north could go to the airport.
Well, most of it is, is the downtown area. That, that's, that's where we have the biggest problem.
Well, that's all we're talking about, right? Is the downtown, those piles of snow, right? We're not talking about moving the entire town's snowfall into, okay, just clarifying.
That's a 75% budget increase.
Yeah. What with the gas when you're, you gotta, you're looking at where you're going. But anyway, that's.
What else you got?
Yep.
I, I don't have anything either. So financial review?
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the payroll for $33,448.88.
33 or 32?
33.
Okay.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to pay the warrant of $909,777.22.
Second?
That includes a very large payment to the school payment.
School payment of $526,861.
What else? There was a couple of things.
Q1 appropriation of $101,603. Water bond payment of $49,119. And the water main repair of $23,104.
So do we have enough left in the checkbook to avoid the monthly minimum fees or?
You're waiting for the next amount, aren't you?
Oh, let's go, everybody, all those in favor of that particular.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And the checkbook status is $227,300, uh, $227,367.8. So we still are solvent with the checkbook.
It's doing great.
Yeah. Just don't go to Shaw's.
So those.
Is there only one in here to say?
Those four things that Chad just read, the only four, four purchases, the school payment and those others, that was 77% of that, that packet. So those were the bulk of really where the money went.
Right.
There was a water main break, but what was the other water thing?
Uh, water bond payment.
Water bond. So that's the water bond.
Bond.
Yep.
I think that was the one they did a few years back where they.
Yep, probably.
Yeah. And that one was $49,119, yeah, the water bond payment.
Okay, we have an executive session. Personnel.
Yep. Make a motion to go onto executive session for personnel under 1DSA 313A3.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
See you.
Take care.